Twenty-one, and so I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I give invocation today, let us have a moment of silence for Register of Deeds who we lost a few, couple of weeks ago, Corey Smith, and for our legislator, Russ Jennings, who we lost last week. Gracious Heavenly Father, Creator of the universe, Author of truth, we come to you today with heavy hearts with regard to the people we've lost, not only Russ and Corey, but also others, including thirty-year-olds and ninety-some-year-olds. Father, death is all around us, and Father, we know that's a part of our life here on earth in this broken world. Father, we thank you so much for Corey and Russ and the public service that they provided. We thank you particularly for Russ and the wisdom and knowledge that he shared with an element of humor and how he served the people for so many years. Father, we're mindful too of other families who need your comfort and care, and we trust that you'll be there. We pray you'll provide that, fill that void for them. Father, we're mindful too of the sicknesses around us. We're mindful too that this broken world needs hearts, souls, and minds entered by you. And Father, we ask that you be with us this day as we go about the county's business, that you would give us the wisdom to make the decisions on behalf of the people in this county. Father, we bring all of our prayers to you through your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Lord. As we open today's meeting, I want to welcome everybody here. We want to make this a productive time for you and for all of us, and so we will get right into the agenda here very shortly. I want to echo the sentiments, the feeling of loss of losing our county Register of Deeds, Corey Smith, and also Jay Russell Jennings or Russ as we know him. They're going to be both really missed, and so we hold out thoughts and prayers for their families and for their loved ones. As we look at the season, it is a season of an election. I think that's about tomorrow, and so in the interest of accurate information, I'm going to turn to Dory and ask her to fill you in on whatever the latest is on the election.
All right, so just a reminder that today is the last day for early voting. We will end that at noon today, and then tomorrow, of course, you would be able to vote at your polling location from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
That's it?
That's it for today.
If you haven't voted, go vote, and so we'll go from there. The consent agenda, entertain a motion.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion.
Second.
In a second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, that carries. The regular agenda, we need to add one item, and that is the local emergency operations plan update, which is federally required part of Steve Green's business in emergency management. He has some things to discuss with us, and so let's put that on our agenda right after the parcel plat Dietz Grass Land Estate, that entry. And with that entered, I would entertain a motion to approve an amended agenda.
Chairman, I move to approve with the addition of the LEOP.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, that carries. Public comment, this is a time for any item not on the agenda, and so we'll make the microphone available to you, and if you have an agenda, I'm sorry, have a public comment item, please come forward. That's a stranger out of the past. That fellow looks kind of familiar. Hi, Mark.
I just want to present something for your consideration as a board.
Just a minute. Would you tell us, tell the others who you are, and then give us your remarks?
My name's Mark Welch, and for your consideration, I would like you to consider possibly the renaming of the Juvenile Detention Center in honor of Russ Jennings. I knew Russ also, and I knew what type of person he was, and today still is, and I think that would be a great way to honor Russ. You know, not only for his job with the state, but he was also a former Fannie County employee, and that's one of the areas that his expertise laid was in the juvenile justice system. I think it would be a great honor if we would rename that institution after him, and that's all I have.
Sorry about that. I appreciate your comments, Mark. Anybody on the commission have a comment or response?
Thank you.
Appreciate you bringing it up.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else for public comment time? Mr. Kreitzer.
Good morning.
How are you?
So far, so good. Bob Kreitzer, Fannie County Economic Development. First of all, I would really like to second what Mark just said. Wow, Russ Jennings was such an impact and had a lot to do with that, not only here in Garden City, Fannie County, but also statewide. Hopefully, you all got your notice that the CHAP study is theoretically finished, and they're going to deliver that Wednesday at noon. Nothing like a free lunch, but hopefully it will lead us to being able to start looking at some additional housing in Holcomb and in the county, and it's going to really be a big impact in what we're trying to build throughout the area. And I guess it brings me to the other topic, which is the ARP, ARPA funds. And they're laying there, and there are so many things that could be going on and could be used for, but as long as they're laying there, we're not doing anything with them. You know, a great example is what you did out of the Spark funds with the Nazarene Church and childcare. You know, it took them quite a while to get it going, but it's up, and it's running, and it's going, and it's proving the concept. And I guess if, I know there's so much going on in your world and budgets and all of these other kind of things that you had to do and get finished each and every week, if it would help, I think it would be awesome to maybe follow the state's pattern and create maybe a small select committee of interested people in the community that are impacted by these kinds of funds and by the overall stipulations of how those funds can be spent, and get some people together and say, all right, what are the priorities? What are the best usage and utilizations of those funds, and how do we get them to work as early as possible? We just really ask you to consider that as a priority for the county, because it's all about revitalization, and we can't revitalize until we start. So, thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to turn to our county administrator for just a moment. We're still waiting. Do we have all of the final rules on the fund? Are we still waiting for that to be sorted out and for Jeff?
No, the, no, we do not. I mean, if not, the Treasury has not released the entire guidelines and so forth on that, but county staff's been meeting with the consultant that you authorized us to use in creation of that list and anticipate on the fifteenth, presenting that to the Board of County Commissioners.
On the fifteenth?
Right.
So we're moving, but slowly, but something will be announced.
And the reason behind that is that unlike the Sparks funding, you have the time. You don't have to just react, and that's, that's, that's really the difference. You've got a lot more time to get through this.
Anyone else have a comment? Any other public comment before we move on to our agenda? Hearing none. The first item of business, Larry, would you come forward and deal with your culvert bids and...
Good morning.
Good morning, Larry.
What I have for you this morning is the culvert bids, that we opened bids on October 22nd for our corrugated metal culvert bids used for driveway and field entrances off of county roads. A little background, Public Works receives bids yearly to restock our culverts that we have down at the Bruno pit that we actually keep on hand. We sent out three bids, received two of them back. First one, Wellburn Sales Incorporated, with a bid of $13,540.34. Second bid was J&amp;J Drainage Products with a bid of $13,461.20. DC Wholesale did not send a bid in, so there's a difference of $79.14. We've used both, both companies, so our recommendation is to accept the bid from J&amp;J Drainage Products for the low bid of $13,461.20. The fiscal policy or policy impact would be from Roden Bridge Maintenance Materials.
I have two questions for you, Larry.
Yes, sir.
This is a firm you've done business with before.
Yes.
And the items that are bidding meet the specs, the standards that you're, that you went out for bids on?
Yes.
All right, entertain a motion.
A quick question. Have you ever looked at plastic culverts, the black ones, the ribbed ones?
We have some down there. I'm not sure if they were, if they were bought on bid or how we, how we, we got them, but we have used them in the past, yes.
Are they more or less expensive, or what's your thoughts on?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure. Like I said, I haven't, I don't remember, you know, since I've been in this position, we haven't, haven't bought any, but I know we do have some down at the Bruno. I would need to do a little research, find out the difference in the price.
It wouldn't be like the plastic fence posts recycled?
I don't know what they're made of.
I'd have to, I'd have to.
Plastic is...
Right, I'd have to check into it and see if maybe there is, we have a little history of using them in the past and how they worked out for us.
I remember a county employee coming in and seeking approval to buy some fence posts to circle a radio tower, and, and the commissioner suggested plastic, so I went to the dealer, and he said he'll be happy to load as many of those as you want, but don't put them out in sunshine, because when the sun gets on them, they get a little soft, and next thing, they're laying on their side, so that might be the way with your plastic culvert.
That could be. I'd have to do a little, little research on those to see why we haven't used more of them.
All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the bid from J&amp;J Drainage Products in the amount of $13,461.20 to be taken from Roden Bridge Maintenance.
Is there a second?
A second.
Yeah, you have a motion and a second. Although, is any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries, and you can order culverts.
All right, thank you. And also, a quick update. Mill and overlay on Six Mile Road is complete. Center line paint project is also complete, minus we need, you know, we're going to drive, drive the road, make sure there's not any cleanup, or maybe possibly some grinding to do on some joints. Also, contractor is, has begun with the crack ceiling project also, about 50% through that as well. South Wind, a lot of those, they, that, what they're doing now won't fill those cracks completely. We'll be, we'll be back in the, in the spring to, to put, you know, we're going to try a second part of that to try to get those to fill up. The rubber crack seal was not going to fill those, all those completely.
Yes, and I would agree, and I'm sure Mr. Kreitzer could tell you which ones need extra work. Thank you.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a request for some renovations at the courthouse, so this is a person that we've not had a chance to meet yet, I think. Come forward, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's nice to meet you guys finally. My name's Kelsey Duncan. I'm the new court administrator over at the Fannie County Courthouse, and I'm just here to ask you guys for approval to renovate one of our old judicial office suites into a public meeting room. I've been working with the Fannie County Law Library Committee, and they have agreed to fund the project, so we're not asking for any money today. All we're asking for is approval to go ahead with the renovations. Does anybody have any questions?
Want to repeat that, you're not asking for money today?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, pleasure to meet you and thanks for coming here, but because we are recorded and video and so forth, would you just verbalize briefly what you've said to us in the letter so that the public outside of this room might understand what's happening with the renovation, even though the law library group is, is going to pay for it?
Yes, sir. So we just finished a big renovation on the fourth floor of the Fannie County courthouse in anticipation of moving all of the judges and their support staff upstairs, and that has left us with a need for more public meeting space, because we had to use one of the public meeting rooms to create office space for the court administration office. So, we are just, we're down a conference room, and we'd really love to put one on a public floor, and that is what we envision the second floor of the courthouse being is open to the public, so that is why we are asking to renovate that office suite. Right now, it is two really funkily designed, it's an inner office for a judge and then an outer office for his staff, and it's just, it's, it's not useful space right now because of the configuration, so what we'd like to do is we'd like to take down the wall separating the two rooms and create one big space where we can have, you know, a large conference table with ten chairs, audiovisual capabilities so that we can do remote court proceedings, as well as public meeting space. You know, we do administrative hearings, we would do administrative hearings in that space, and then also a couple of public access computers so that the public can come in and access court records and, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The public outside of this room needed to be aware.
Absolutely.
Kelsey, it does not clearly show in the drawing the footprint we have, but I'm going to assume that, that the perimeter is lined with bookshelves for all of the law library books. Is that, is that the case in here?
No, and it won't be. We're actually not moving the law library. The law library, the law library is going to stay on the fourth floor, so we're not going to be putting any bookcases or anything into that room.
Okay, well, it's not, it wasn't clear here, so, thank you.
Hey, that, Kelsey, I have a question for you. I noticed that you're, you're spending quite a bit of money on HVAC, and we spend a lot of money on that building on HVAC, so I hope that you're working with the, with the maintenance folks to get that correct.
Yes, sir. We are going to be working with the approved vendors, and by that I mean approved by the county and the manufacturer. We don't want to void the warranty, so.
I see you had one bid. Did anybody else bid on this particular renovation?
No, we, we went with, with Gary Randall, because he is intimately familiar with the courthouse, and with such an old building and all the bugaboos that go along with that, we felt comfortable with, with Gary.
And to follow up, the HVAC is under his bid. Is he doing it, or are you still...
He's contracting it out to the approved contractor.
I would just caution you that in the past, we've had some issues with no-bid work. I understand the quality and the consistency here, but if you do come looking for taxpayer dollars, that will be very important to the commission.
Yes, and in the past with the, the fourth floor, we did, we did work with Public Works on, on getting bids out and, you know, followed all of the county procedures.
Okay, I'm assuming we would like to have a motion in the record, so I would entertain a motion to allow their,
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve this recommendation, or this request to repurpose room 208 at the courthouse.
And Clifford seconds.
Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Thank you, Kelsey.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see Alicia, but I see her boss. Come forward, please. Trent, how are you?
Doing, doing well this morning. Alicia didn't want to come in today, so here I am. No, she, she wanted, she just couldn't make it, but you'll see her soon, I'm sure. Yeah.
Hope she's well.
She is. Her child was not feeling well, so, yep.
That's the responsibility of mom.
That's right, that's right. She's, she's a good mom, so we support that. Yeah, so Trent Maxwell here to present to you guys the plat for the Dietz Grass Land Estate. Palmberg Land Surveying Services LLC is requesting to plat Dietz Grass Land Estates. The property is generally located at 2305 Sherlock Road, Fannie County, Kansas. Lot one, block one is currently, currently has a house on the property and will contain about 18.4 acres. The lot two, block one is currently vacant and will contain about five acres. In the future, the new owner of the lot two, block one, would like to construct a house on that property. The property is zoned agricultural, or a rezone will require, will be required prior to any building permits being issued for that potential future home. The second submitted, the parcel plat, was presented for plat review on October 14th, 2021, and met regulations. Planning Commission did vote all in favor of this plat. Alternatives governing body may approve the plat. Alternatives governing body may approve the plat, the government, that's option one. Alternative number two, the governing body may not approve the plat and we recommend approval of the plat. And any questions?
Go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, any questions that I can answer for you.
Before I turn to the commission, I wanna ask Lana, does this in any way have a impact, Lana, on any of the things going on out west?
No, sir, it does not, this is just an opportunity for a family that purchased this property to add an additional homestead to that property, doesn't have any impact on any of the parcels that we've been working on that we would serve with the wastewater, this project, property is closer to Holcombe, and as we've talked about before, there's kind of a dividing line where if we were going west, we, if we did a subdivision, something, you know, larger than a single property added addition, we can look at adding that into Holcombe's wastewater solution, pretty much this would be in that category. The stuff we're looking at to serve with the Quinby wastewater would be further east of this parcel.
My reason for those online for asking Lana is that it's no secret, we're looking at a Westside Sewer District and things for the future development out there, we wanna see everything fit together if we can.
We appreciate that, yeah, this would be further west than what we would be looking to serve with the Quinby solution, so, thank you.
Thanks, Lana, all right, come back, Trent, we'll take up the discussion of your request with the commission, anybody have anything to offer?
Just, there's a note about ingress egress off that, I guess, I assume it's the Flaglots, access road from the north to south, but is there Sherlock Road access here? I just, I don't see, don't see it. I mean, we're not landlocking this.
No, I believe there is access off Sherlock on the, what would be the east side.
East side. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve plat number FC two thousand twenty one dash thirty seven.
Second?
Two seconds, so.
Go ahead, it's in Larry's area.
Larry had a second.
Let Larry have that.
And your last chance for discussion, hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That plat is approved, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
L E O P, that is an acronym for Local Emergency Operations Plan, I learned that a long time ago, and Sarah is not your secretary, that's Superfund Amendments and Reauthorization Act, that's part of this, so go right ahead, Derek.
Hi, my name's Steve Green, I'm the emergency manager for the county, appreciate you guys fitting me in. The L E O P is something that, that really guides our emergency response and our infrastructure of our emergency operations center, and it provides a strategic directive and to really drive those initiatives if we do have a, a major event. So I'm seeking your endorsement of this, it's on a five-year update, once you endorse this, if you see, see fit to do so, we will submit this to the state for certification and then it'll be published on our web E O C, and I know it's a really robust document and I'm sure you all read it word for word, I assure you, I've gone through this several times, it is fit for purpose, it will suffice for what we're trying to accomplish if indeed we have to activate and go into a full-scale E O C to, you know, to guide the mitigation of any emergencies.
Steve, I would have a couple of questions.
Please.
It's a public document, is it not, even though it's kinda under, in the cloud and under lock and key, if you will?
Yeah, it's really not, it's really not something that we would publish out into the public, and I think, I mean, it is a public document, okay, but it is an internal document to guide that infrastructure and strategic directives of emergency mitigation.
Times have changed.
Has it been formally approved, though?
It has not been, this is part of the process, okay, every five years, we review it, update it, tweak it as needed, get an endorsement from the commit, the commission chairman, then we submit it through the state for a proper.
So if you do open it up to the public, you do need to make sure that it is a work in process, a draft?
Yes, sir.
It's in essence going to the state for its formal approval?
Yes, sir, and I can, I can reidentify that as a draft versus a.
Years past, one of the requirements was that we file a hard copy with the public library and, and I'll bet they still have one over in some dark corner back from the nineties, but this, you're wanting a signature on this?
Yes, sir.
And I would, would probably desire a motion in the record that gives me some authority.
Well, before we do that, Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment, I really appreciated your word robust, you know, about four hundred and some pages.
Yeah, it's pretty big.
I thought that was, but it also gives me a greater appreciation when we see legislators looking through a thousand or two thousand pages, because four hundred is a lot of pages to look through, even through an executive summary, but I, I just appreciated the word robust.
And since some of that information's redundant, you know, but still, it's, it's critical information to guide us and through any emergency mitigation.
And, so, I, I, what we were asked for here in our agenda packet was to authorize the county administrator to proceed with the necessary engagements, oh, excuse me, oh, no, that's right, I'm reading wrong one, I profoundly apologize, I'm reading the wrong one. I would move then, Mr. Chairman, that the chairman be authorized to sign the document to endorse this plan.
Appreciate that, is there a second?
Clifford seconds.
Okay, any discussion? You have discussion, Dwayne? Nope, and all those in favor say aye.
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 Let me sign this right quick, and I'll give it to you.
I really appreciate that, I know it was a, a lot of information to throw at you, so. It's part of our process in emergency management, we never have to use any of this, that's our goal.
Open book test, yeah.
Anything else, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Larry, make sure your mic's on.
Yes, ma'am.
I see next on the agenda would be our county administrator and an indebtedness review, so it's as far as yours, Robert.
And sorry about jumping ahead.
So you brought.
Get anxious.
Well, I had jumped ahead on my computer, I was.
I'm gonna go ahead and defer to Jenny Newberry this morning to provide you an update and a, kind of a summary of what we've been going through, if you don't mind.
Good morning, Jenny Newberry, Finance Coordinator for the county.
Beep up, please, I'm.
Jenny Newberry, Finance Coordinator for the county, as we've been going through some of our processes with the fiscal committee, there were two possible, two issues that were possible for refinance and we have, have gone through those, one of them will not be beneficial to refinance, but the other one will, it's for the sewer district, the general obligation refunding bonds that were issued in two thousand and two, the current, current amount due on them is six hundred and forty thousand dollars total with the fees and dues to refinance, that would be six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The current rate is four point seven five, the refinance would be just under two and a half percent, that, and it's a savings of about ten thousand dollars per year and a total of a hundred and forty three thousand dollars for, to refinance this issue, and we would like to request approval to move forward with the refinance of this issue.
So this is a refinance that could potentially save or wouldn't, more than potentially gonna save something, but this is not our end of the year unless we move the funds here and there?
No, it is not, sir, this is in essence just some housekeeping of your debt service, once again, this was issued, hadn't, twenty years ago, at four point seven five percent, which, and for forty years, USDA funding on that, which is traditionally a little bit, a little bit higher, but you can go up to forty years, and I know it was for sewer district number three, and it was all in a, in an effort to try to make them a little bit affordable, so we'll go through this refinancing, reissuing it for twenty years, the remaining term, and once again, saving approximately a hundred and forty three thousand dollars, what is anticipated based upon today's bond buyer interest rates.
I appreciate you and your staff's hard work and digging through this, it's gotta be boring as can be, going through all sorts of figures, but.
Sadly, no, it's not.
Yeah.
Some of us enjoy that.
If it saves money, we're thankful for your work and so are the taxpayers, I would hope so, Lana?
Mr. Chairman, and, and question for either or both of you, so, does this shorten the length of time? Does this positively affect those of us who are paying this debt service, or how does that work? I mean, I understand the savings, I understand the lower interest rate, it all makes sense, I, I'm in favor, but who does it directly impact in a positive nature?
Sure, good question, the current debt service is being paid by an assessment to the, to the homeowner, so this could potentially reduce that assessment to meet those obligations.
That's what I wondered.
And it would be over the same remaining term, but we would, you know, we would anticipate that it should reflect a little bit of reduction in that assessment.
That's what I was wanting to clarify, 'cause that was my interpretation, but I wanted to, the, the term is gonna, the length of time's gonna stay the same, but it could have a positive impact for those who are paying the debt service.
If you, if you recall, I believe the current assessment for this year, remaining of this year is seven percent, for next year, it's right around six point seven five mils, excuse me, I said percent. We had seven mils for twenty twenty one, I think it's about six point seven five for twenty twenty two.
Yep, thank you for that explanation.
Well, there would be no action required on our part today, it would appear that let's you work this out and then we take actions.
Just the authorization to move forward for the refinancing of this series.
Want that in a motion or consent?
Please.
Motion?
Okay.
I would move that we do so.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
With a question, now this doesn't add to the, start another forty years, correct?
Twenty years, no.
Okay, twenty, okay. What, what happened to the other sewer district that you, you mentioned, you looked at two of them? It didn't have the same interest rates?
The other one, the other one was the HVAC unit, and it was the lease purchase, it was not feasible to re, to refinance it, it was not going to be enough savings.
Your second stand?
Yes.
Okay, discussion.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've about come to the end of an agenda before we have some reports, so, county administrator, Robert Reese.
Very good, to continue on, as I mentioned before, you'll see a report from us on projects for your ARPA funds on the fifteenth, working with Jeff Stevens on that for my parametrics, additionally been working on SunTet Terrace Development, if you recall, that is the one that will be connecting to sewer district number three, which is slated for two upgrades to the current two pump stations utilizing the ARPA funds, one to help accommodate the approximately a hundred and ten units, but the first phase of seventy one units will be flowing through our sewer district number three. Initially, it was proposed that it would be fifty five units, we met with the city and the developer late last week, worked through that, we do have a question in to S M H Sloan Meyer and Hancock, who has been assisting us in assessing the capacity to make sure that it can, in fact, that northern pump station, meet the needs of those seventy one units, so we're working through that. We will have later this week, a developers agreement with the city and the developers on this service that we will be providing to them, in general, we will not be doing the billing for this, we will allow the city then to bill what we need in terms of meeting our operational and capital costs of, of this facility, so stay tuned on that, yes, sir?
So, did I hear you correctly, that the first phase has increased from fifty five to seventy one units?
That is, that is correct, that's what being proposed.
And is that part of the reason that, that hearing was canceled the other day?
Yes, the developer had requested that they, consideration to increase the number in that first. Part of it was because of the potential efficiency in bidding the street improvement project.
For the R H I D?
Correct, correct.
They have all of the water they need there?
It'll be, city water.
They're hooking into the city.
How big their line is going out, but, okay.
Thank you.
Before we depart from your report, Jeff Steele and the advice that we've, that we've procured, in the past, we did, with the other program, did a Thursday morning, ten AM.
Jeff Stevens, I'm sorry, okay.
Meeting, are we gonna do that again, and, and, and to answer Bob's involving the community, when we did that, we then, we could say, okay, here's somebody in the community that, that we need you to touch base with, and they reached out and touched base, I, their reports were, so, is it gonna work kinda the same way?
We can get it to work that, that way as well, if, if you'd like, is, I'm curious if the other cities, schools and colleges are doing that same process, I'm, I'm not aware.
Everybody has their own little.
Correct, yeah, this time they, everybody has their own, and if, if we, if we're talking about pooling it, we're probably looking at pooling, you know, twelve million dollars plus, if that's what the, what's being proposed here. So, I don't know what that process looks like, but I, but the direction that I received from the board of county commissioners earlier was to provide a listing of some of the projects.
Now this?
And we have to try and move forward in this regards, as so many of the other ones, as you recall, we distributed to various other groups, and this one here, since other groups have received their own directly, that was the direction that, that I received from the board was to move forward in this.
Our first, our first impression was that tended to be money for county one-time projects.
Correct.
That, that were allowed, and sewer district, for example, was allowed, but we don't know what all, or didn't yet know what all was allowed, so, therein lies the problem, Bill.
But there's no doubt that childcare will be allowed, I, final rules.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
And, and I appreciate Mr. Kreitzer's comments that, you know, we see empirical going up now, and I think there is a timeliness to a childcare solution, and as a carve-out, I think at least we should show goodwill and, and at least match the city's contribution, and I personally don't see why that can't occur now, and, and we commissioners should be at the table, I, I don't want forty people in the room all grabbing for a piece of this, I think what we saw last time, I thought it worked pretty well. So I, I think if, if Jeff's gotten back to you, I think if our chairman wants it, I think we should start the Thursday meetings and, and I would like to see us move in this calendar year on the, at least the childcare piece.
And I'm gonna guess, Bob, that's your main concern, is it not, is childcare?
Yes, sir, I think from a priority standpoint, what we've learned through the process of K D H E and the state fire marshal and all of the other rules and hoops, that it seemed like even when you get an inspection, they say, okay, everything's perfect except, except, and if we don't get started, it's gonna be tough, so.
Still say, there's a fix for a big share of the, of the daycare problems, and that's allow grandma to daycare up to six kids without all of the inspections, she's done it for hundreds of years.
I, I think it's great, as long as she doesn't get more than about six or seven, and then the rules strip in, and then the rules strip in, and.
We just need to get our legislators to agree with us that grandma is, ought to be allowed to be grandma, so.
And I think that's gonna be a real test, because right now, K D H E has all of the authority and they're not coming under the legislation, so hopefully sometime.
We all been down that route?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else for your report?
No, that's it.
County councillor report? County Councilor report?
Um, I, Trista Joyce and I do have a meeting scheduled, I think, next week. I was trying to check my calendar, but I couldn't find it, to discuss tax sales and getting started on that. So that should be coming down the pipe. Again, Northwest Industrial District, we should be getting that in front of you for dissolution, hopefully at the next meeting, if everything goes as planned. Um, I believe that's all I have for my report today.
That's it, huh? Okay, all right. Commissioner reports. Larry?
Well, since you're looking this direction, I take that's me.
Yeah, that's you.
Had Roden Bridge interviews with Commissioner Dries, and we interviewed two candidates. We've got one coming in another week after, after we canvassed the ballots, I think, is when we're gonna do that.
One more interview, is that what you're saying?
One more. They were unable to attend the other day due to an accident, so couldn't travel. But then attended the Republican meeting where we elected a new, a recommendation for new registered deeds. And I wanted to add my condolence to both families. I didn't know Corey Smith's family very well, but very acquainted with Russ and his family, and he greatly missed. He was a lot of horsepower in Topeka for us, and we're gonna miss him.
Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
Dr. Bill?
You heard about the childcare discussion, which came from the economic development meeting, which I attended last week, driving around Southwind. I did inspect the treatment of the roads, and, and we'll get at some of those bigger bumps eventually. I was in Topeka with our lobbyists for KLPG to discuss our future and, and some policy issues for the next legislative session. You heard about the registered deeds, deeds replacement election in which Stephanie Shockley's name is put forward last Wednesday to the governor, and we should hear back within seven working days. Also attended the funeral service for, for our registered deeds. Russ Jennings service, folks probably know, it's next, this Saturday at 10:30 at the Lakin Methodist Church, followed by a dinner at the Kearney County Fairgrounds. And we will host in Finney County the replacement convention for Representative Jennings' replacement. That will be on Wednesday, the 17th of November. The community college registration is probably between 5:00 and 6:00. That's all I have.
I have a quick question for you, Bill, if you don't mind. When you have the, I don't think the correct title, the party, the committee folks that are gonna select an appointee for Russ's vacancy, you have, you'll host all of these other counties that he represents?
That's correct. He represented, of course, the non-Garden City part of Finney in District 122, Kearney County, Hamilton County, Greeley County in whole, but also a township in Greck County, I've discovered, and three townships in Haskell County. So yes, all those chairs have been contacted, and the eligible precinct people from those counties will be eligible to attend either person or by proxy and vote on his replacement.
Which leads me to my final point before I move on to the other guys. As a Republican Chair for Finney County, you once in a while are looking for committee people, men and women. Are you still looking? Do you have everything? Bill, is this your chance?
No, we, we always have people coming and going, moving in and out of the precincts. So when we have a replacement election, and, and that window is 21 days from, from notice, it's a very quick process. We're, we're in sort of a blackout period where we cannot nominate people. So we were in a blackout period anticipating the registered deeds replacement, and the next day, unfortunately, Representative Jennings died. We're in another blackout period, so we, we can't nominate anyone right now.
For those that think a precinct committee man or precinct committee woman's position is not very important, you can see here in the last two weeks how very important it is. So anyway.
I always tell the precinct people, it doesn't matter till it matters. And we've replaced every county elected, countywide elected now, except for you commissioners. Maybe you're next.
Thank you, sir.
Any comments from the clerk?
Mr. Dries, your report, please.
First off, I had, just echo Larry's comments on the election, or interview committee. And Great Plains had their annual meeting, which I had to miss. We actually had one day I could harvest that week, so that's it.
That's it? Okay. Lon?
You guys might need to put me on the clock this morning, so go ahead. Duane's grabbed his phone. No, a couple of things. One is, I did attend the Republican meeting, and I, I want to say here publicly, I appreciate Bill's leadership of the precinct people, and sometimes it's like herding cats, and, and he does a great job of that herding. And, but, yeah, it is an important, whether it be Republican or Democrat, it is an important responsibility that people take lightly sometimes until it, it comes to those important decisions. So I appreciate that. I was out at the gun range groundbreaking. It was a very brief thing because of the sand and blowing and so forth. But what I want to spend quite a little bit of time on, and you might want to jot down a couple of dates too, as I go through this. I just got back a week or so ago from the KAC Annual Conference in Overland Park. It will be back in Overland Park another year, and it'll be October 17th to 19th, which is a Monday through Wednesday, just like this format was. And then it'll move to Wichita for, I think, a couple of years or something. They, they rotate. Some people have said, well, why don't we have it in Topeka and be close to the Capitol? Well, there's no facility in Topeka, even with the remodeling of their expo center that will accommodate the, the conference. Only Wichita and Kansas City have the facilities to be able to accommodate with the exhibitors and the, and the participants. They were, they, being the KAC staff, was very pleased. The attendance exceeded their estimate. They had estimated there'd be 200 and some registrants, and there were actually over 300 registrants. So it was, it was a very positive thing for KAC budget, obviously. I did get to visit with Randy, our former administrator, who just got married on Saturday back here at St. Mary's Church, with Katrina from juvenile detention, who is now the HR Director in Ottawa County, and John Ellerman, who's off in Riley County, who's finding it a little bit different to work with no administrator in the county. Riley County has three commissioners and no administrator, and it's not a complaint or just a difference. And he said, it's, it's kind of different. And he says, I always liked having the administrator to use as a sounding board whenever I had ideas and stuff. And he says, I don't have that here. I go straight to the commissioners. So, so it was interesting visiting with three of our former people. The day, the other date I want you to take note of is, the KAC is coordinating an all-county day at the Capitol, trying to get not just commissioners, but treasurers and clerks and everybody together on the one day, and that'll be February 16th, at, at least at this point. That's, they're still doing the planning for that. But I think it behooves us to participate in, in that all-county day and let the, let the legislators know how important county government is, how important local government is, because we're, we're running into some roadblocks in the legislature with regard to understanding how important local government is. There were a couple of bylaw changes, nothing really critical, but they, they did amend, we did vote to amend the bylaws, just to clarify a few things and make them a little more clean. And then we did vote for the legislative policy, and I'm gonna hand this off to Bill, because he is working with KLPG and so forth. And this one that I'm giving you, Bill, is just a draft, and you'll notice on page, whatever this is, five, we did, through the delegate process, we added some additional language on mental health with regard to impatient for youth and adults. But the two big things that were discussed and, and pointed out with our legislative policy is, number one, we are gonna be more active in striving to achieve constitutional home rule rather than statutory home rule as a KAC. And then, number two, the mental health aspect was really highlighted, and how that has been brought to the forefront with the, in the last 18 months or so, and the need for mental health services. And, and there's a number of other things. There's some language changes. For example, we had addressed the tax lid before. Now we're addressing revenue neutral, and we are asking for some, some, not clarifications, but some points of the revenue neutral law to be corrected, if you will, or updated in this next session. But in, in, other than that, the, the two highlights were constitutional home rule and mental health, as we discussed the legislative policy. So with that, I think I've hit the end of my time, according to Commissioner Dries, and so I will end my comments.
That's it? Any questions of Lon? My, go ahead.
This is, not, well, this is not a, this is not a report, but I, I, I think maybe this is the appropriate place to bring it up. I will not be present for vote, or I don't believe I'm gonna be present for vote canvassing next Monday. And according to Dory and the statute that she presented to us, I don't necessarily just appoint someone, but we need someone to take my place in that canvas process. And it's up to the other four commissioners to appoint that person. But I just wanted to inform you, and then the chairman can do with what he wants. But I have contacted Andy Farmer, who was interested in, in public, or who is interested in public service, and asked him if he would be available if you choose to appoint him for November 8th, the morning of November 8th, and he is available. And the reason that I asked him, and I told him, there's no guarantee, that I said the four people have to appoint you. So he, he understands that it's just a thought on my part. But he's an outstanding character. He wants to be in public service in some way. He's shown that interest, and he is not on the ballot, nor does he represent any of the organizations that are on the ballot tomorrow. So he's a very independent voice who could be that replacement for me in vote canvassing next Monday.
So why don't I seek consensus? If Lon is not here, then we, we appoint Andy. Would that be our consensus opinion? Is that good enough? Is that good enough, Dory?
Yeah, I assume he's a qualified elector in Finney County?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he's the manager of Hutton Construction.
Okay.
Yeah, he's with Hutton.
Moved here some years ago now.
Several years.
And built our building on Sixth Street, so.
And what is the name again?
Andy Farmer.
Okay, while she's writing that down, I'll give my quick report. Finney County Committee on Aging, I've had a couple or three meetings over there. They're going through the interview process for a new director, and, and as of yesterday, visiting with one of the board members, they have narrowed down to two, and he said almost narrowed down to one. So we will soon get a, an advisory on that. And then their chairman of the Finney County Committee on Aging Board, Robert Sparks resigned, and they needed to receive his resignation and act on it, and then send us a name. And has a name come over yet, Dory? They?
I have not received.
They had a couple that they were, they felt would be a good fit for their board, and, and I encourage that. So as Lon reported, we went out to the gun range, the sandblasting contest, and man, that was, that was brutal out there, that 50 mile an hour wind and sand. Also attended Corey Smith's memorial service, as well as on Saturday, Randy Partington and Catherine got married, and so attended that wedding. And I have one other thing to report, and that is at 2:00 today, if anybody is interested, at the City Hall, where the city commission chambers, will be the 2017 Tax Committee meeting. I'm gonna call it that, because the, the quarterly meeting dealing with the taxes for Jenny Barker Road, the zoo, and all of that, this is our, our quarterly meeting at 2:00. So you're welcome. It's a public meeting. So with that, I have nothing else to report. Is there anything else to take up before we accept a, a motion to go into executive session? Is 15 minutes enough?
I think that should be fine.
Okay. What I saw here, what we need is a motion for executive session not to exceed 15 minutes under Kansas Statute annotated 75-4319, paragraph B4, attorney-client relationship, and no action will be taken. So I. Commissioners and, and our county council and our county administrator.
HR Director?
H, HR, yeah, HR, I'm sorry. Get everybody out here. So entertain that motion.
So move?
Second.
Okay, a motion and second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we shall reconvene at a quarter of 10. So. Got everybody back? We're here. Okay, I'm, we're out of the executive session and I'm going to report that no action was taken, but for you folks with a real keen interest, we're going to have a meeting of the Board of Canvassers next Monday, and that, next, yes, next Monday on the 8th. And at that point, we will take up clarifying action as a board on your request. In the meantime, we're asked staff to draft a new approach to, to try to answer your concerns in large part. Does that sound pretty accurate to what we're doing? But because of some logistics, we can't vote on that today. We need to have some facts and figures and go from there, so.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any, you're not on the agenda, guys, but I want to give you a chance. Any questions that you want to ask? Come on up, Randy.
Randy Evans. That'll be on the agenda November 8th.
We'll put it on the agenda for the 8th.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah. And we're meeting at 8:30 to count ballots. Can we, can we have an agenda item ahead of canvassing?
Well, canvas is a published time, so we will do that first.
Okay, that shouldn't take a long time, but.
Right, so we'll do that first and that's where we canvas the provisional ballots and then we'll go down and process those. While the girls are processing, we can continue on with the meeting. I believe that we'll also have possibly an oath of office for our new register of deeds if, if we get word from the governor this week, so.
That sound satisfactory to you guys?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, anything else to come before this body, before we adjourn for the day? Until 8:30 then on the 1st, we stand adjourned.